Again, Agenda Item Number One is the report of the Chairman, and I have just a few things to note. One, we have new AV equipment.[20.14][20.14](Laughter.) And I think it's been in the making for some time. And Mr. Acosta, you're going to say something more about this. But I would like to note that Tony Chapp and Jody Reader are the staff members who have been chiefly lording over this project, and it's been going on for more than a month. So we will see a new screen and everything momentarily. But Mr. Acosta will say more about that momentarily. Second, I've received a letter from DC Council Chairman Phil Mendelson designating Council Member Tony Wells as his first alternate and Jonathan Cass as his second alternate to the Commission. So we're pleased that Mr. Wells will continue to be with us under Chairman Mendelson's reign. Third, yesterday I participated in just a small, brief roundtable discussion of the Hyde Act with the Greater Washington Board of Trade. Mr. Tragoning was at that meeting as well. And it was really nothing more than a follow-up roundtable discussion from the congressional hearing back in July. So the Hyde Act has lots of interest. And then last, I'll say, and you have it at your place, that pursuant to delegations of authority adopted by the Commission, I found that the proposed modification for the PUD at Square 442, the United House of Prayer, which is on Rhode Island Avenue, would not be inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol. And again, that delegated action, you have a copy of. Agenda Item Number 1A is you also have before you the proposed meeting dates for calendar year 2013. Those are in your packet. If there are no questions about the proposed meeting dates, there's nothing out of the ordinary. I would entertain, we have to act formally on that, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2013 calendar.
Aye.
It's been moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and we'll pause for just a second. We good? Okay. Agenda Item Number Two is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, as you know now, at this point in time, we do have a new AV system. So we appreciate your patience as we're going through this. As you may recall, our previous AV system was on the verge of shorting out occasionally. We even had temporary microphones here at one Commission meeting. So we hope this will last us for another 10 years. And I do again thank Tony Chapp and Jody Reader for their good work in getting this done in a short amount of time. You also note that we do have new cameras above. Since we started streaming this live, we thought it'd be important to at least get more up-to-date equipment as we do a live cast these Commission meetings to the public. In lieu of Staff Executive Director's report today, I'd like to take this opportunity just to follow up on the commemoration study that we talked about at July's meeting. A lot of interest in terms of digital forms of commemoration, as well as non-traditional forms of commemoration. And what we've done over the last summer, as you may recall, the AIDS quilt was in town. And we took that opportunity to really kind of break that down as a case study for different forms of commemoration, how we perhaps could use this in the nation's capital in the future, or perhaps consider this as a viable alternative to perhaps commemorate important events or people. So what I'd like to do is to invite Will Herbig, just to ramp up a short video that we made, to kind of show you what happened this last summer, and also some of the lessons that we've learned through this whole event. And also just to try out our new screen, projector system. Let's see if that works. So Will, if you would come up.
Thank you very much. Understanding the role and form of commemoration in the nation's capital is an ongoing and important role in NCPC's work. At your last meeting, Lucy Kimpf briefed you on the Memorial Trends and Practice Report, which will be released later this fall. We are also reviewing policies related to commemoration as part of our updates to the Comprehensive Plan. And in general, we continue to look for opportunities to explore and understand innovation in the forms of commemoration, both here and abroad. Such an opportunity came about this summer in honor of the 25th anniversary of the original display, when one of Washington's most memorable memorials returned to the National Mall. Displayed at the Smithsonian Folk Life Festival and at more than 60 locations throughout our region, the AIDS Memorial Quilt was a stunning reminder of the power of an alternative commemoration. To better understand the impact of the quilt and to further explore this non-traditional commemoration, I took time to interview several of the key players and organizers with a role in the project. In a moment, I'll share with you a short video, but first, a little background. NCPC began exploring non-traditional commemoration back in 2009. We joined the Smithsonian and welcomed Professor Kurt Savage, who authored Monument Wars. In his book, he recommended that we begin exploring temporary displays to generate new ideas about commemoration in the nation's capital. We followed up a year later with an event entitled Beyond Granite, where we invited experts to discuss some of the most important non-traditional works that have benefited communities in America and abroad. We had a conversation with the designer of the World Trade Center's Tribute in Light. We invited an artist who focused on non-traditional and light installations, looking at the issues related to the American veteran. And we talked directly with the director of the Fourth Plinth in London. Building upon those conversations, NCPC and GSA partnered to begin exploring opportunities for bringing a temporary display to Washington. We anticipate rolling out the next steps of this program later this fall. Upon visiting the quilt, what struck all of us is that it's dynamic, sewn by hand, and designed to incorporate the many voices affected by AIDS, both today and in the past. In fact, it remains irrelevant today as it was when it was first unfurled back in 1987. In addition to challenging our notions about the types of materials we use in commemoration, the quilt expands our understanding of how we experience memorials. Sections of the quilt are displayed continuously at locations throughout the U.S. and around the world. In fact, right here this summer, not only was it on the Mall, but it was in 50 locations throughout our region. This allowed the panels to become part of a variety of settings. This approach increased access to the quilt in a way simply not possible with permanent site-specific installations. And finally, as been discussed previously, a companion online digital experience is further broadening the audience and allowing a new generation to experience and interact with the quilt for the first time. A truly exciting enterprise. So I thank you for the opportunity to share with you this powerful alternative form of commemoration. And let's take a look. Tony?
Well, the inception and idea for the AIDS Memorial Quilt really has its roots in the Thirty years ago, this disease arrived, as it were. And 25 years ago, when the number of dead in just one small neighborhood, the Castro in San Francisco, reached 1,000, our founder had an idea, and he asked people to march with placards in their hands of the names of people who they had loved and lost. And when they got to the federal building at the end of this march, he taped these up the side of the building. And when he looked at it, he realized it looked like a quilt.
Well, I think the thing that makes the AIDS Quilt so powerful is the fact that it has been created by thousands of people who are parts of communities that have been affected by HIV/AIDS. And it's their personal investment that makes the stories in the quilt so powerful to the public that then sees it on display.
As part of the Quilt 2012 Digital Experience Project, we created three digital experiences. The first one we started on is an interactive table-touch browser that allows people to search and browse digital images of every one of the 6,000 blocks or the 48,000 panels that make up the AIDS Memorial Quilt. The second experience that we brought, that we developed specifically for this and that we brought to Washington, is an interactive timeline of the 30 years of the history of the development of AIDS, or the public recognition of AIDS, and the 25-year history of the quilt. And the third digital experience is a distributed experience. It's here, but it's everywhere. And it's what we call a mobile web app.
Well, throughout the course of the history of the AIDS epidemic and the AIDS Memorial Quilt, this quilt has been on display in more than 25,000 locations, and more than 20 million people have experienced the quilt. The quilt is ever-changing, and that is both a wonderful thing, as well as a burden, because it grows day by day by day. And so how do we gather this information, collect it, and preserve it, and make it accessible? The ever-changing nature of it is part of its beauty and part of its additional workload.
Yeah, I think the AIDS Quilt is different from many of the traditional memorials here in Washington that you'll see as you walk around the National Mall, in that it is a living memorial. It is constantly being added to. It is not something that's static and seen in one place, but it moves to new audiences, and new audiences can interact with it in different kinds of ways. I think that more non-traditional memorials would be well-received by the public. To see their response to the AIDS Quilt over the course of 25 years tells you that there is a profound interaction with this type of expression.
Barbara J., Lester J., Raymond J., Sonia J.
But in the sense that the National Mall particularly is kind of a contested place with its meaning evolving over time, I think non-traditional memorials do very well in that space, because they can invite various communities down to interact with them over time, rather than setting up a permanent place. I think the AIDS Quilt has really been a pioneer in the kind of interactive memorial that I think we'll see more of in the future. It really does invite community engagement, and it addresses important issues and motivates people to think about how these issues affect their lives, affect the broader culture in the country, and throughout the world. So it's not just something that commemorates something from the past, but it commemorates something that people are living for now.
Yeah, and that concludes our presentation. I'd like to thank Will Herbig, Scott Sowers, and Lucy Kimpf for their work on this little video.
Thank you very much.
We have audio? Okay. Agenda Item Number Three is a legislative update. Ms. Kyler?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Our agenda items today are very short. This likely may be the shortest meeting we've had since I've been here. We have just three consent items on the calendar, on the consent calendar, and then one action item. The three consent calendar items are as follows. Item number 4A is the United States Organization Bethesda Warrior Family Center of the Naval Support Activity Bethesda. Item 4B is the AT&amp;T Wireless Communication Antennas and Associated Equipment at the Liberty Loan Building. And item number 4C is a map amendment to the Fort Stanton Recreation Center. Any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
No.
It's been moved and seconded that the consent calendar, the three items, be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Consent calendar is adopted. Agenda Item Number 5A is the Memorial to Victims of Ukrainian Man-made Famine of 1932-1933. We have Ms. Kelly. Welcome.
Yes, good afternoon. As the Chairman said, before you today is the Memorial to the Victims of the Ukrainian Man-made Famine of 1932 to 1933, for preliminary and final approval. The memorial was submitted by the National Park Service on behalf of the Government of Ukraine, and is slated to go at U.S. Reservation 78. Congress authorized the Government of Ukraine to establish a memorial on federal land in 2006. The law requires the memorial not be, not use federal money to build or maintain the memorial, and maintenance of the memorial will be conducted by the Ukrainian government. At its October 2008 meeting, the Commission approved U.S. Reservation 78 for the memorial location. Reservation 78 is located at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue on the north, F Street on the south, and North Capitol Street on the east. To the west of the site is a small building that houses a SunTrust bank. Other cultural facilities in the area include the U.S. Postal Museum and Union Station. North along Massachusetts Avenue is the Victims of Communism Memorial. At the time that the Commission approved the site, the Executive Director found a finding of no significant impact to conclude an environmental assessment on the site selection. The Fonzie included six design guidelines for the memorial to design to follow. The intent of the guidelines were to create a memorial site that could function as an urban triangle park with public amenities, and one that respected the surrounding uses and context. Here you can see the existing conditions of Reservation 78 is approximately 3,100 square feet, and is mainly a grass panel with no public amenities. Also in this photo on the right, excuse me, located here, is the small SunTrust building, which was formerly a child's restaurant, and was designed in the 1920s by William Van Allen, the designer of the Chrysler Building. Views to this building was an important consideration as the memorial was designed. I'd also like to point out in the bottom-right photo, element of the memorial, which is to extend the Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk to the property line. You can see the existing concrete curbing in that location, and there is a gap between the Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk and the property line. And so the Park Service proposes to extend the Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk with the brick pavers to the property line. In December of 2011, at a Commission meeting, the Park Service presented two concept alternatives for the memorial. The Commission's comments pertain mainly to the Park Service's preferred alternative, which is the Field of Wheat, which you see on the screen.
Sorry, I just want to turn my box off.
Again, the Commission's comments pertain mainly to the NPS's preferred alternative, which is the Field of Wheat concept, which is on the screen. And this is the design that has moved forward towards final design. The alternative included a horizontal sculptural element that depicted fading wheat. The sculpture would be seven and a half feet tall on a plinth, and would face the Massachusetts Avenue. Between the back of the sculpture, it's going to move away, between the back of the sculpture and F Street, the design proposed 11 columnar beech trees, which was proposed for a backdrop for the memorial. The Commission noted that the location and the lack of design on the back of the memorial could create an appearance of a blank wall along F Street, and could negatively affect the pedestrians on that sidewalk. Additionally, the trees proposed to create an appearance, could create an appearance of a vegetative wall along F Street. Staff shared the same concerns as the Commission, and worked with the Park Service, CFA, and the DC shipboard to address these concerns as the project moved forward. What resulted from those consultations is the memorial design that you see here. Also on the bottom of the screen is the concept design for comparison. The sculptural element remains, I apologize, I keep clicking the mouse before I click Control. The sculptural element remains, and is carried through in the final. It still faces Massachusetts Avenue and the plaza there. The memorial itself will sit on a plinth wall that follows the path of the plaza down to the Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk. The site itself slopes, so the plinth wall will vary in height. But the plinth wall height on the west side was carried forth in a low seating wall. The seating wall will also include a bench with a back for those that need back support. The plaza now opens up to more of the Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk. The landscaped area that was in concept has moved to the western side of the site. As well as the proposed landscaping for both the southern landscaping bed and the western landscaping bed will be low plantings. This will allow for views to the historic building. The 11 columnar beech trees that were proposed in the concept are now going to be smaller canopy trees. The proposed Field of Wheat sculpture depicts the loss of wheat and food in Ukraine by having high-boss relief on the left, going down to negative relief on the right. And as the sculpture becomes negative, the words "Holodomor" and the years begin to protrude from the sculpture. This is the name of the event in Ukrainian. The sculpture will be 29 feet in length, plus an additional panel that will be five feet long, that will say "In Memory of the Victims of this Event," in both Ukrainian and in English. On either side of the sculpture will be a granite end cap. Here you can see that plinth that the sculpture will sit on, that varies in height. This is the proposed landscaping for the memorial. You can see the seven trees will be red bud trees, and the lower plantings will be nandina. You can see the vibrant colors that the landscaping will bring to the site. Regarding the materials, the sculpture will be a bronze, as well as the bench. The plinth and the end caps for the sculpture will be a granite, and this granite will be carried over to the low seating wall. The plaza area itself will be paved with slate that will have texture, and this is to emulate a field that has just been plowed. The walkway from F Street to the Memorial Plaza will be a DC brick, as the existing walkways around the site. As I noted earlier, at the design, concept design of the memorial, the Commission expressed concern that the location of the sculptural element and as its proximity to F Street may give an appearance of a wall. Also, at that time, the back of the memorial was not designed, and could create a blank wall experience for people on the sidewalk. The next couple of slides will illustrate what the Park Service has done to address these concerns. Here you can see the site section through the memorial that shows the height of the memorial, and the location of the memorial relative to the F Street sidewalk. Since the concept design, the sculptural element has moved four and a half feet closer to Massachusetts Avenue to allow for additional distance between the sidewalk and the memorial. This creates a larger planting bed between the memorial and the F Street sidewalk. The sculpture itself is orientated east-west in order to provide views to the child's restaurant building. The move of the element towards Massachusetts Avenue does not protrude into this important view shed. The Park Service has submitted views of what the memorial will look like from F Street. This is looking west. The image shows the wider landscaping bed and the height of the wall. And the landscaping bed is longer than the height of the sculpture. This is looking east along F Street, so you have the Postal Museum and Union Station, and the memorial is located here. And through this view, you can see how the change from the columnar beech trees to the red buds allow views through the memorial site. Since the concept design, the back of the sculpture has been designed, and I'll pass around what that will look like. The design includes the use of a pattern that was extrapolated from textile patterns that were in Ukraine during the 1930s. This is what that could look like. The pattern adds visual interest to the back of the memorial. Also, in this image, you can see the new connection from the F Street sidewalk to the plaza Here is one last look of the memorial from Massachusetts Avenue sidewalk. Staff reviewed the final design against the design guidelines and find it in conformance. We also reviewed the changes since concept, and believe that the Park Service moved in a positive direction regarding the memorial's impact on F Street. Overall, we are supportive of the memorial design, as it provides a use and a function to an underutilized U.S. reservation. With that, it's the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approve the preliminary and final site development plans for the memorial to the victims of the Ukrainian man-made famine of 1932 to 1933. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as we have representation from the architects, as well as the artists of the sculpture.
Terrific, thank you. I just have one question. And note that the National Park Service is not responsible for the maintenance, typically when it's outsourced, if you will. How is that memorialized? Is there an MOU between, say, the Ukrainian government, and with whom, and who supervises that, and who's the, who lords over the, kind of the compliance with the maintenance plan?
Yes, there are agreements that go with it in the process. But I would ask Steve Lawrenceetti, who's the Deputy Superintendent, to speak to what we've done in the past.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Peter's right. We enter into a memorandum of agreement with, in this case, the Government of Ukraine, on how the maintenance will be done, when it will be done, what processes. We'll review it, we'll review the work, we'll keep an eye on it. We've done this with a lot of the newer memorials, smaller memorials.
Sure.
So yes, we have some good background on this.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrenceetti. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the lettering will come out of the wall at a certain point. At what height would that be? I assume it's clear enough so nobody walking by would be bumped into it? Is that clear?
Yes.
How high would the letters that are coming out from the wall be?
Well, the plinth, it's going to be, the memorial's on a plinth, so they'll be at varying heights, but the lettering will at least be a foot and a half above the ground.
A foot and a half above the ground? So the lettering that does protrude from the wall would be possibly, would it be protected by the plinth?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Tragoning?
Okay. I'm scared of this new system, and I feel the pressure, Mr. Chairman, of your saying this could be the earliest meeting adjournment ever, to not make any comments. But I will say that I appreciate the progress that the memorial design has made, but I would just note that several of the objections, in fact, have not actually really been addressed. So the issue with the blankness of the wall was not that it was unadorned, it was that it was clearly the back of something, and that it was unanimated. So that even though a crowd of people might be on the other side of that wall, interacting with the memorial, talking about their experiences in the Ukraine, talking about hunger problems, whatever it might be, if you're on the other side of that wall, nothing is going on, and that's the, that was the issue. So I think we suggested at the time of the Commission meeting, it might be ameliorated with a lower height, so that you could see that there were people on the other side of the wall, or that maybe some perocity or transparency, so that it wasn't just a blank wall. I think the pattern that was picked was very lovely. I like the interplay of the shadows of the trees on the wall. I like the interplay of the shadows of the trees on the wall, but it doesn't really take away from the fact that it's a public space deadening element and I don't think that's changed with this design. One thing that might make a difference is in the new design, the deeper landscaping is also clearly a front and a back. So you have a low wall, but people are not going to be inclined to be facing out toward F Street because it seems like that landscaped area, no feet should be in that area, that people shouldn't be sitting and facing that direction. But that's something else that might help to animate the F Street side. So those are my kind of comments about the wall and how it relates to the rest of the public space. It seems to me like it, you know, it has a front and a back and it contributes negatively, I have to say, to the, to the public realm on F Street, although not so obtrusive from further up F Street, but when you get along to that side, it's still that dead blank wall. I like the pattern of the pavers, the granite pavers, although it's a lot of paved material. And one of the suggestions I would make is that the, what we had before this memorial was grass which can absorb storm water and that perhaps even keeping these paving materials, we could look at an installation approach that would allow some permeability and porosity of water into the ground, which is not only an explicit objective of the city's sustainability strategy, but I actually think in keeping with the idea of a plowed field that is trying to be represented by the choice of paving materials. I realize we're at the final approval stage and these suggestions, you know, we'll have to decide as a commission what we want to do with those, but those are two areas I felt compelled to comment on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May.
It's going to take me a while to master the use of that button. Anyway, the, I guess I would like the architect to respond to the issue of water on the site because I believe there are some features that address the concerns, so.
Good afternoon, Commission. I'm Mary Kay Lanzalata with Hartman Cox Architects. To respond to the concern about storm water, we will be happy to explore the permeable paving. However, what we have designed is a rain garden and so that western planting area is intended to absorb that moisture and the water's actually drained to that rain garden area. So we have responded to the concern about storm water runoff. We're happy to explore permeable paving if that's what the commission would like.
And then with regard to the design concern about the having this wall facing F Street, I understand the concern, but I don't necessarily agree that it is as negative an effect as Mr. Gronin suggests. I'm, you know, given the full range of things that we had looked at for this memorial, this is by far the best concept and some of the suggestions about making it more porous or lowering the height, I think frankly would significantly diminish the concept. And I think that frankly, given the expanse of F Street and the liveliness of what happens along F Street through its entire length, particularly directly across the street, I don't see this as really particularly deadening. It's certainly not without precedent and to have a one-sided memorial on a certain way, I mean, that does exist in other circumstances with memorials in similar settings. And I think frankly, this is a lot more successful than those in setting the memorial comfortably onto the site and providing a good experience. It is admittedly a one-sided experience, but frankly, the concept doesn't work when you try to make some of the changes that were suggested and I think that overall, it's an excellent design and we're very, very pleased with it pretty much as it is.
Can we look at the elevation again, just for grins?
So the slight change in color, I think, is where it bends a bit on the left side. And then I don't recall the overall dimension, maybe Ms. Lanzalata could recall that for us.
I think as Ms. Kelly indicated, the height of the wall is seven foot six from the midpoint of the sculpture because the grade is sloping on the north side of the site. The sculpture itself is six feet tall and the base slopes, so the height will be consistent from the F Street elevation. Does that answer your question?
What's the overall length?
Oh, I'm sorry, the overall length, it's 29 feet before the bend, roughly 30 feet nominally, and then the panel that bends is five feet.
And the total dimension of the site along F Street?
About 109 feet long and we're about 34 and a half feet overall, so about less than a third of the site.
Right.
Mr. Wells and then Ms. Grunwald.
Yes, in looking at this site, the architect or whoever wants to explain, how do you interact with this site? Do you just, is it intended that you come up and you stare at the wall? Is this a very kind of, it's not a site you interact with, I guess, other than you look at what's depicted on the wall, except for it does seem interesting that the pavers give you a sense of plowing a ground, but otherwise it seems like there's one bench. And so if you do go there, the bench is, it's not like the place where you would necessarily go with other folks to sit down and eat your lunch or something, I guess, because you don't, there's no benches to look at each other. So is this kind of a passive?
It is a passive. I would say it's passive for the personal experience. A lot of individual families lost many members and many of them are Ukrainian-Americans today. So I think the embassy anticipates that there will be gatherings here, commemorative events, wreathlings and not celebrations per se because you don't want to celebrate this horror, but you need to remember it. This idea is an educational memorial and so what we're trying to explain, and the artist is here, is that the wheat was taken away. And so the way that the sculpture recesses goes from a positive wheat to the negative, as Ms. Kelly described, really is that sort of explanation. We do expect people to come up and touch it and experience it firsthand. With regard to the seating, as Ms. Kelly indicated, there is a single bench on the north end, but the seating wall, I think other people will find it quite attractive. And currently, this site is a very popular lunchtime site, not to sit, but to come and experience.
That's helpful. I didn't realize that wall was a sitting wall because you're exactly right, that is an area that, especially the food trucks and such, that people go there and eat and they're not going to take their food over to the Dubliner or anywhere else over there. But I didn't realize that was a sitting wall. In terms of the wall facing out, the blank wall that we're talking about with the pattern, is there any thought of even putting a low bench along that instead so that it's another kind of contributing asset?
Does the plinth below the wall, is that a seating area as well?
It can be until it gets uncomfortable because it's starting about two feet and it's sloping down to six inches. At some point, somebody's going to be uncomfortable trying to squat at the six inch height, but yes, you could sit on either side. I think the prominent elevation here and the way that people will experience this, many people will be driving down Massachusetts Avenue and North Capitol and those are the two prominent streets here in DC and so that's why the memorial was really turned towards that direction as well.
It wasn't about the direction, but on the blank wall that we're talking about?
We did not consider having a seating wall to the south. Part of it is you want to have a personal experience with the wall and the height of the wall is really set so that when you're looking at the wall, you're looking at the wall, you're not looking over the wall. It is a very personal experience.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair. Ms. Graywall has the floor.
Thanks. The texture on the slate, is that anti-slip in any way? As you mentioned, this is a, you know, highly trafficked pedestrian area for lunch and et cetera.
It does have a texture to it, has a relatively mild amplitude and it would be considered anti-slip.
Okay. And then you mentioned that this is an educational memorial. I guess we didn't really go over the text and I assume it's not finalized yet.
It is under review in Kiev presently. We're waiting for their response. And then we'll consult with the Park Service to make sure it's consistent with the Park Service's overall plans.
And what is the slope of the site currently? It slopes downwards towards sort of that corner, correct?
It actually rises towards North Capitol and slopes to the west and I believe, and I apologize, I'm not looking at the survey, but I think it slopes about 18 inches overall.
I guess I was a little confused because you mentioned that the rain garden?
Is to the west.
Okay. All right, so that'll hit the water.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Dixon.
Mr. Chairman, my question goes back to the wall and I'm very, very hesitant historically about trying to second guess folks who design things for their community because they have a sense of it. And I know this is a dark period. I actually have some Ukrainians that work for me, so I'm going to get some feedback, I'm sure, and others I know. Kiev is a very nice place to be. Now, but is there any chance that the wall could be translucent so you could see through it? Because wheat and fields grow in sunlight or die in sunlight and that way you would have an experience on either side and you wouldn't have a visual barrier and you could do the same kind of, I think, artwork in terms of the wheat representation and the declining wheat on a wall that was clear. I don't know whether that's, but I just, that's my idea and I just wonder whether there'd been any thought given to it. Then you'd have a brighter place where you could see on both sides where they were, where I think it's clear what I'm thinking.
This design came out of a design competition and the concept was a bronze sculpture.
Yep.
So that's where we are.
I would, I'm just, I would say translucent would really be, you'd walk both ways, you could see the wheat, you could see the...
It's an interesting suggestion, Mr. Arrington. Mr. Dixon.
Mr. Hart.
I think the design's come a long way to the better and I think that moving the wall towards Massachusetts Avenue, adding landscape on F Street addresses a lot of the concerns that I might have had at that point. And I think that having a blank wall is not necessarily a detraction, so I applaud the progress that's made.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
And Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My father was born in Ukraine, my mother's family is from Ukraine as well, so somewhat familiar with this and can identify with aspects of it. And a few things occurred to me. The location in proximity to Union Station, I think, is highly significant because it's a meeting point for tour groups and an opportunity to take them before they cross Columbus Circle to the Capitol or wherever they might be going to say, this is the Ukrainian memorial to the victims of a manmade famine and so it would show American sensitivity to events of this nature. Why is there a memorial here? Because this is what Americans do and this is who Americans are. I would hope and expect that it would inspire questions. What is this all about? And to encourage people to find out the roots of it. And I think perhaps one of the most significant aspects of it is the use of the word "manmade." I think that's highly significant and deeply emotional and also raises questions. How could such a thing have occurred? It's, hopefully appears to be a unique occurrence or fairly unique in history. I understand as a memorial to the Irish potato famine in New York City, that's a gathering place for Irish-Americans and to others to review the events that occurred in Ireland and the great migrations across the ocean as a result and the enrichment of our country because of it. So I think that those aspects of it, it's, to me, what just grabs me more than anything else is "manmade," that it was deliberate and so I'm really pleased that that aspect of this particular event is being emphasized in the design and in the memorial.
Thank you. Before I call on Councilman Wells, I'll say, before we take a vote, if there's anyone from the Ukrainian government who would like to comment on this, don't feel compelled to, but I wanted to afford you the opportunity if you would like to comment on the memorial itself. Councilman Wells?
Yeah, I am a strong believer and agree that we use our public space when we can as teaching spaces and that especially in the nation's capital, in the degree to which it's multicultural and, you know, this fits into, I think, a vision of what our city should be. But I'm also concerned that this is an area where we have a lot of tourists, a lot of folks are walking at night and there's not a lot of, you know, eyes on the street and such as sometimes you have in some other areas. I'd like to know what the 24-hour lighting plan is for the memorial because this clearly creates, you know, it's potentially a nice hiding space.
And no lighting is proposed as part of this memorial. They did a look at the existing street lighting and found that it was sufficient for the memorial site.
Again, I'm not part of site selection and I don't know much about art, but the transparent, lack of transparency through it is, it's just an area where at times we do create a sense of safety for our tourists and people that we invite from across the world to walk around there at the hotels and it's hard for me to tell whether that's a, you know, if we're creating a hazard or not.
Could I just point out, I think the site plan there indicates where the light poles actually are. Is that correct? Lanzalata?
It does and F Street is actually quite well lit, I think, in response to some of the past challenges in that neighborhood. So there is a significant amount of ambient light and in the interest of reducing energy, we've decided not to add any additional light to the site.
Ms. Gronin.
I'll just say, in keeping with the notion that this is a plaza where people currently gather for lunch, probably that will happen more so with the addition of the seating. You might have noticed that it's getting hotter in the district in the summer, in fact, twice as hot in cities as in places outside of cities. And I'm just wondering if a lighter colored stone material might make it more pleasant to be in this plaza during our hottest days. It seems maybe not a good idea to use, especially for that much paving, so much heat absorbing material. So that's another thought. In addition to perviousness, which would allow maybe some green and some additional space, I would say maybe a lighter color might also make it a more hospitable place. And this will be my last comment about the wall. I mean, I have to say, I'm underwhelmed by the argument that we've done worse in other parts of the city. I'm sure that's true, but, you know, I think that by creating a back to this memorial that's hidden from everything that happens on the other side, you know, it does create not just safety issues, but, you know, these are areas where people can undertake activities unobserved by people on the other side of the wall, whatever those activities might be. And, you know, if you create a blank wall that's clearly the back of something, you know, I think that given its location and the other activities in the area, that you are going to find that it attracts some amount of amenity in terms of how it ends up getting used. Thank you.
Other comments from commission members before we... Mr. Proventia.
Some of those other activities in this area, I think the commissioners are aware is a homeless shelter that's inadequate for the...
And bars.
...population.
A lot of bars.
Two Irish bars.
Exactly.
Okay. On the lighting, I think the comment was, F Street is well lit, is Massachusetts Avenue equally well lit, sufficient that you could read the inscription on the panels?
Yes, sir, it is.
As opposed to well lighting the backside of the sculpture wall. Interesting proximity, not only Union Station, but to the Victims of Communism Memorial just a few blocks away. There's obviously a connection between the themes of the two. Did the scale of the sculptural wall as it moved toward Massachusetts Avenue change in any, in any way? Is it still the same overall dimensions?
Roughly, roughly. It was adjusted to align with the building wall to the... It was adjusted to align with the building wall to the west.
Okay. Irrigation system, or?
No, sir.
None? Okay. The plantings, it looks like there's been some substitution with the red bud and the so forth. Are any of those also, is there a connection to the Ukraine? Is, are any of those vegetation native to Ukraine, as well as being hardy and appropriate for the DC area?
There is a plant that has a red leaf and a red berry that is very symbolic, and I apologize, I don't know the name of it. Colina.
And it's similar to the red bamboo?
Yes, and so the selection of the plant with the berry was to reference that.
Excellent. The inscription, you said that that's going to be the educational part, it'll talk about the extent of the numbers of victims and the duration and so forth? Is that the general theme for the inscription?
Ms. Kelly, could you point to the wayside? The inscription is meant to be more of a dedication, so on the sculpture, it's more of a dedicatory-type inscription.
Right.
To the memory of those who suffered and died, the millions of people who died.
Right.
There will be a wayside on the northwest corner of the site, and that will have more educational information and links to a website.
That's what I was looking for. Our experience, for example, at the Pentagon, for the Pentagon Memorial, was we expected people to go to the Pentagon Memorial Foundation website in advance of their visit, so that they understand the significance. But when we actually surveyed the visitors, they said, "What website?" So, we ended up putting a little brochure stand with an explanatory brochure, so they could get the benefit. What's the general access for maintenance to the site?
Sorry, general access?
Uh huh.
This...
Do you need to have a vehicle? Is this, example, would you be bringing vehicles onto the site?
There's no expectation...
Are the pavers going to be stressed to put the way maintenance vehicles?
There's no expectation that a car would, or a vehicle would drive onto the plaza. There is street parking immediately adjacent, and so the expectation was any maintenance vehicles would park on the street.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
If there are no further comments or questions from Commission members, I would invite, if they wish, someone from the Ukrainian government to make comments. I don't know if there's anyone here or not.
The First Secretary is here, Prasut Stark.
I'm Prasut Stark, I'm the First Secretary of the Embassy of Ukraine. I would like to stress gratitude to the government of the United States, to the National Park Service for assistance and great help for this progress, to bring this project to reality. And I would like to mention that in the next year, we have, we will commemorate the 80th anniversary of this great tragedy, and we hope that to this date, we will have this memorial have done and to be built here in the capital of the United States, in Washington, DC. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Executive Director's recommendation.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that the EDR before you be approved, sensing no further comment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. One, sorry, two noes, so the ayes have it. Thank you very much for a very good, very good discussion. If there's nothing else to come before the Commission from any member, Mr. Provencha?
I just wanted to thank the NCPC executive staff leadership. We had a very productive session on August 24th. Let me back up. May 17th was one of the NCPC speaker series, where the theme was about sustainability. At that time, Dr. Robyn, the Deputy Under-Secretary, announced the issuance on May 15th of the Unified Facility Criteria on Installation Master Planning, one of the most significant and major rewrites of that document. On August 24th, NCPC staff, including Ms. Christine Somme, attended an implementation rollout session for more than 40 installation planners, including the NCPC staff, at the Mark Center. So, we wanted to just extend our appreciation to the NCPC staff for participating in that event, to get a better understanding of that important piece of guidance that was recently issued, as well as participating, and we had kind of a hands-on exercise. The professor lectured a bit, and then we did, we had a tabletop exercise, and the theme was, you laid a military installation out according to the old criteria, and then you rotated teams, and then you redesigned it using the new criteria. And I believe Ms. Somme was one, the professor issued gold, silver, and bronze medals, and I believe Ms. Somme was on one of those award-winning teams, if memory serves me.
Okay, we've lost audio, but I think we're wrapping up. Do you have it back? Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Provencha, for noting that so many of our projects that come before us are Department of Defense or military installation-related, and we are enjoying, thanks largely to Mr. Provencha's initiative, and increasingly, close working relationship with staff planners, and so we appreciate that, and we have other things planned to build on that relationship.
My next meeting is October 3rd.
October 3rd, right. So, hearing nothing else, thank you for a good meeting today, and we are adjourned.